Every day. I thought it was every day, daily appreciation.
We are streaming just so folks know.
I'd like to call to order the school board work session for February 12, 2024. Tiffany, would you please do the roll?
Valdez, here.
Brophy. Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Aldridge.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Mohammed. Aditya. Michelle.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will be starting tonight's Saver Pride section of our agenda with a dedication to Shakopee high school junior Evan Martin, who passed away and started his next journey on January 29, 2024. While words cannot fully capture Evan's talents, passions, and impact, his family shared that he was deeply committed to lacrosse, participating actively in both traditional lacrosse and the Shakopee Youth Lacrosse Association. Evan was also an aspiring auto mechanic, known for his eagerness to learn and patience in teaching others, especially those younger than him. The support shown by Evan's work family at Zuppa Kachina, as well as the generous donation of firewood made by Northland Forest Products that helped keep the sacred fire burning, were just a few of the many examples of community support that were shown during this unimaginably difficult time. Moving forward, it remains our priority to continue supporting Evan's family, friends, staff, students, our native groups, and the broader community in the weeks and months ahead. Justine Vogel, our American Indian Education Coordinator, has also played a pivotal role in providing support to our community and ensuring that we honor Evan and his family appropriately. I now ask that we all come together for a moment of silence to honor Evan Martin, his life, and his journey. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is our second part of our Saver Pride, and that is to honor our Shakopee Public Schools Teacher of the Year candidates. Each year, Education Minnesota celebrates the tradition of excellence in teaching. This year, Education Minnesota will leave the 60th Minnesota Teacher of the Year. One hundred fifty-nine candidates were recently named for the 2024 Minnesota Teacher of the Year Award, and we are here tonight to honor four amazing Shakopee Public Schools candidates who are with us tonight. Eligible candidates for Teacher of the Year can include pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, early childhood family education, and adult basic education teachers from public or private schools. An independent panel of leaders are presently reviewing candidate portfolios and will narrow the list to a group of semifinalists. In March, the panel will convene again and review additional materials from the semifinalists to choose a group of finalists. The Minnesota Teacher of the Year banquet is set for May. Our four candidates represent both Eagle Creek and Jackson Elementary Schools. We would like to recognize and have the candidates who are here tonight come up and share a few words about their passion for education and being a 2024 Teacher of the Year candidate. After I call your name, please join us at the speaker table. Chris Papas is a special education teacher at Eagle Creek Elementary. All right. Yep, so I'll invite all four of you up and then. So, thank you. Becky Garben, kindergarten teacher at Eagle Creek Elementary. Amy Rutter, kindergarten teacher at Jackson Elementary. And Jen Johnson, math intervention teacher at Eagle Creek Elementary. So, Chris, would you like to start?
Sure, I just want to say thank you and that I'm deeply humbled and honored with this honor. This is my 23rd year teaching. I've always taught in special education. The only thing really I've ever wanted to do, my dad was a high school math teacher for 11 years. He used to play school growing up. So, it's just a joy every day to get to come to work and work with the kids. And being new to the district, it's even more of an honor and privilege. So, I just, thank you.
Thank you. Becky?
Just to piggyback off of that, also feeling the same way, just overwhelmed and very humbled and just recognizing that so many teachers are deserving of such recognition because I work alongside some of the best past and present. I'm just so honored to be here and be nominated.
Amy?
Like everyone said, very humble, very honored to be nominated. I've been teaching this my 20th year and 17 have been in Shakopee, and I've always taught kindergarten. And so, it's been really fun to see how much not only kindergarten has changed in the last 20 years, but also how our community has changed and just education in general. So, it's been fun to always continue to grow and learn with that. But like, I completely agree with Becky as well. There are so many deserving teachers in Shakopee that deserve this recognition because I've learned from some of the best of them.
Jen?
Yeah, as an educator, I mean, this is what we do. This is our life's purpose, I think for most of us, is to be, you know, at the heart of what we're supposed to be with kids. Like, that's our job, is to be a loving presence with kids and try to be as positive as we can when hard things are happening. And we all know hard things are happening. So, none of us would be up here without the support of the people that are back here. So, and I want to say thank Lorena for nominating me. That was a huge surprise. And for Amy and Abby and Kim, who are also here from Eagle Creek, because none of us would be where we are without people like these gals. We are, it's either all of us or none of us, really. And we rely on each other a lot. And like Amy said, education has really changed. This is my 30th year teaching, although today one of my students said I don't look a day over 35. Thank you very much. I'm just 35. It's my 25th year in Shakopee. So, I do want to thank everybody that's representing Shakopee for the dedication, the time they put into my educational career, the support I received as a second grade teacher at Sweeney and then now as a math and reading interventionist I've been at Eagle Creek the last 12 years. So, thank you for that and just, it is an honor. And we keep saying that, but it's true. We don't feel like we deserve it because there's other people that obviously deserve it. I mean, maybe more than I do, you know? But we are glad to be here and we appreciate the recognition tonight.
Just, I'll say one more sentence and then we'll do a picture together. So, thank you educators for joining us tonight. Thank you for supporting each and every student in your classrooms and school community.
All right.
Well, we'll have you just join.
Yeah.
Right here.
I want you to lay on the table.
Heard my last day as superintendent.
Why not?
We kneel down. Thank you so much.
Jeff, I would have laid on you. That I don't know. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Jeff, thanks.
Thank you very much.
We do have a short agenda tonight. Won't take very long.
We'll just be a distraction.
Someday, everybody's gonna stay. Next on our agenda is item 3.3, School Board Recognition Month, and we have Tiffany Olson, Director of Communications and Strategic Development.
Yes, I'm excited to share this because you shouldn't have to share this on your behalf, right? So, Minnesota School Board Association, they have set February as the Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, and their initiative is to build awareness and understanding of the vital portion of elected school board members playing in our society. So, I am honored to be in front of you to be able to share this message on behalf of our entire school district. Some fun facts that they shared that are pretty enamoring when you see that. That school board members in the state of Minnesota roughly support 870,000 students in more than 2,200 schools. And that's nearly 57,000 teachers and then thousands of administrators and support workers. So, very much a community effort. And arguably, one of the most important elements, we believe at Shakopee Public Schools with our board, that is amazing, and I'm gonna look at you two here, is that this is our second year that we have student representation on here. We have the inclusion of student voice with Aditya and Michelle and also Danielle, who was our first student school board member to graduate. And she's at this little place called Harvard doing great things there as well. But I've personally been able to see each one of you truly engage with our students and school community, ensure that we are not only doing what we say as a district that we're going to do, but that the work includes voices that support each and every student and not just most of our students. So, the diversity on our board is amazing. We appreciate all the backgrounds that you bring, the life experiences that you bring, and then the commitment. There's those that have been re-elected, no matter how much we joke around about whether they were going to run or not. We're so grateful. And those that also pledge their commitment to do something that they haven't done before. So, really appreciate that, our student members as well. And if you recall, during a recent school board development session, each of you shared your motivation and goals for being on the school board. I looked back at that. A lot of the common themes were a desire to serve the public and the community. You wanted to do something extremely meaningful, which you are. And that also supporting students in public education is why that you were here. So, ironically, the fantastic team at Red Oak Elementary, who is always doing fun things just like all of our other great schools that we have, they incorporated a fun project that they created and produced. It's a little wobbly and it's really fun about what they love most about school to showcase the importance of schools and the impacts on the students. And then there's a fun little message at the end for our school board. You do also have some cards in front of you that were a part of that project. So, you'll see that there's some fantastic students that wrote what they love most about school. And I think some of the really important things that you see in there is this is home to a lot of our students. This is where they feel joy. This is where they feel importance. We have fantastic teachers here who help them do that. And we want you to all know, those little hands and drawings that are in there, I did proof them all. They all seem to be okay, are who you are supporting. So, with no further ado, thanks to Jenny, our fantastic dean. There's a cute little video that will close out our recognition, but you do have some certificates in front of you from MSBA, and we are all extremely appreciative of what you do, but these little kiddos say it fast. So, I'll let them close it out here.
Um, I like, not only because I get to learn, I get to hang out with students, teachers, and others and staff of Red Oak. And it's just, I like being with people. It's called a nice group, and I like being here.
I like to read and write.
I like school because it's fun. The reason I like school is because I like economics and wrestling, we got to have economics.
At school, I like learning everything.
I like to do homework.
I like school because my peers, they like to choose our kind.
I like school because of a special.
What Abby said.
I like school because we get to do anything.
I like school because it's the best place to learn.
I like learning, not any.
My favorite part of school is gym, recess, and math.
My favorite thing about school is math, reading, writing.
I like to learn.
Um, I love school because I love learning and being able to do that in the recess.
I like to play in the recess.
I like art.
Thank you so much.
The girl's favorite class is economics? Awesome, right? It's a beauty business.
Thank you, Tiffany. That was wonderful. Item four on our agenda is the consideration of the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve that's presented.
Second. We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Brophy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is item five, public comment. I do not have my script in front of me, but that's, my publisher brought that. The maximum time for a public comment is a total of 15 minutes. Individual speakers will be allowed no more than two and a half minutes. And reference Shakopee School District Policy 206 for additional information. Nobody has signed up for public comments, so we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Next up on our agenda is item six, our consent agenda, consent items. We have one item on the list, the approval of the master lease agreement with Apple. I'll make a motion to approve that then.
I'll second.
A motion by Brophy and a second by Valdez. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is item 7.1, a final report on tender refunding. And to present, we have Bill Denasi, the Director of Finance. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Redmond. Included on your screen is a final report on what has become of recent my most favorite topic, and that is bond refundings. And so, really, the purpose behind this brief presentation tonight is, now that our tender refunding is closed and complete, I want to just do a final quick revisit to kind of put a wrap on the entire process. And so, a lot of this will be familiar to you. Some of it will be review. Hopefully, it will be educational, and if it is not educational, at least for the view of the public, it should be clear. So, that will be, that'll be good. Going to the first page that you see, I want to start with just a couple of definitions or one in particular, and then kind of a historical lock back to 2021. Bond refundings, so bond refundings are a term that are utilized by school districts to save debt service costs on outstanding bonds or to modify certain bond covenants or financial terms. In short, a school district will engage in a bond refunding or a tender refunding in order to save taxpayer dollars. That's really the heart of this, is to save costs related to outstanding bonds. And there are two examples that I'd like to outline here, important examples because we have utilized both of them now. There is a traditional bond refunding. That was the case for our 2020D refunding bond and also our 2021A refunding bond. The traditional bond refunding is by far and away the most common, and it occurs when a school district issued bonds with higher interest rates years ago. Since then, if rates drop, the school district can take advantage of the market conditions. They issue new bonds at the current reduced rate interest rates to repay the initial bond issue. And you can see in, in, some years ago, in 2020D, we refunded an original issue of a 2012A, and that saved our district taxpayers 1.35 million. And similarly, we did a refunding bond 2021A, which refunded the 2013A and both 2015A and B bonds, which saved districts, district taxpayers 5.44 million. So, we did that from a historical look back. And then just recently, we did a tender refund, tender bond refunding, which is far less common. So, just to unpack that a little bit, in a tender offer, a bond issuer, or a bond issuer, in our case Shakopee Schools, makes a public bond offer to bondholders to tender their bonds for cash. So, we're buying the bonds back. The tendered bonds are purchased by Shakopee Schools in exchange for new bonds. So, really, the advantage for the school district in a tender bond refunding is you're trading taxable bonds for tax-exempt bonds at a lower principal amount, right? And that's what we did here. So, our tender bond refunding is done and complete, as I mentioned. The new series is 2024A, which replaced the 2021A, taxpayer savings over the life of the bond of 796,000. So, you can see three pretty significant bond refundings over the last handful of years thanks to low interest rates in the 2020-2021 timeframe. Obviously, rates have gone up, and we did a tender refunding to take advantage of that with a lower principal amount. And then the last page, this played a role as well, our credit rating. And again, this is a historical look back and review for most of us. Our credit rating has been upgraded two times in the last four years by Moody's Investor Services. So, that's great news. That's great news for interest rates, and that's just great news for our school district from a financial standpoint in general. So, in January of 2021, we were upgraded from a B double A1 to an A3, and you can see the ratings rationale there was based on planned structural adjustments, budget reductions to balance the general fund budget, as well as improved liquidity from 2020. And then just recently, in December, a couple of months ago, our credit rating was upgraded again from an A3 to an A2 based on improved general fund reserve position. And as I mentioned there, it had a positive impact on our ability to refund our debt, both the traditional way and the tender bond refunding we recently did. So, again, this is done and complete. So, we just wanted to kind of have a final touch point here with the board and the community. And I just have on the bottom, if anybody in the community is interested in coming in and reviewing those credit ratings or interested to learn more information on bond refundings in general, we'd be happy to have them stop in. I don't think there will be a line for that type of a meeting, but just in case, you know, we'd be happy to have them stop in anytime, so.
The girl from Red Oak will.
Yeah. I should send an invite out. I realize this is a lot of review, so you may not have too many questions, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Chair, if I may, please. So, Bill, how many school districts have done a tender bond refunding in the great state of Minnesota?
Yeah, a great question. We're not aware of any. That information is, and I should have mentioned this, that's a really good question. None of this is possible without the hard work of our municipal advisor, PMA, Michael Hart. And PMA did a great job helping the district save taxpayer money. In that work, he informed us that he's not aware of any school districts that have done this. It obviously creates or takes a very specific set of circumstances for this to be a viable option. We both fell into that specific set of circumstances and were able to execute that for a saving, so.
And then just a quick follow-up, so also offer more flexibility with that particular issuance for future refinance opportunities.
Exactly. Yep, the bond is out through 2035, so we will have opportunities should rates change favorably.
Thank you for all the hard work, yeah.
In fact, didn't he say that he wasn't aware of any, like, local government entity? So, not just school board, but city council and county commission as well?
I think you're right.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Bill.
Yep, thank you.
Next on our agenda is item 7.2, Eagle Creek and Sunpath Student Learning in Action. And with us to present, we have Stephanie Baker, Eagle Creek Elementary Principal, and Patrick Leonard, Sunpath Elementary Principal. And you have some guests as well.
Thank you for having us. Myself, Miss Baker, we not only talk about our schools, but mostly, let's go on all the elementary schools across, across the district. We also have a few teachers that have had Miss Baker in this.
Yeah, so I'm Stephanie Baker, the principal at Eagle Creek. And I'm pleased to introduce two of our first grade teachers. We have Abby Perrin and Amy Pass here to help present today. Thanks for having us.
So, we have a few learning targets, and hopefully, by going through these slides and hearing from the teachers, we'll hit these targets. I think the most important one is at the end, here firsthand from those close to our students, our two teachers. But we're gonna be looking at, you're gonna hear about MTSS. You've heard about data, you've heard about assessment. We're gonna talk about how we're actually using all that stuff in the schools and across all our elementarys to improve our instruction and thereby improving our student learning. Compelling vision, what we're gonna go over is connected to our compelling vision, but really hits that number one. It's, you know, our moral imperative to change until all of our system work for all our students. So, that's what we've been doing a lot since being in a school year in literacy, make sure we find ways that impacts all of our students so they improve their learning. I'm sure you're familiar with this, Shakopee Comprehensio Elementary Literacy Framework. The work we've been doing in all the elementarys last few months hit two of them. Robust Assessment for Systems, I heard, and then the expert, I'm trying to have a hard time talking. Expert literacy teachers, and we're gonna kind of go over that as kind of our basis of what's going on in all the elementary schools. Expert literacy for teachers is basically using evidence-based practices, including those.
those associated with science of reading, commitment to professional learning, and understanding the continuum of learning development. And we've been fortunate this year to have our literacy coaches working with all our schools, and what they do is they've been meeting with our grade levels, the PLCs, helping them use their data, and then find us appropriate instruction or intervention that meets that kid's needs. So, we're really doing a lot of work to help with our struggling learners, especially in reading.
Yeah, and so, just to remind everyone, MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. It's another framework in which we do everything, both social, emotional, behavioral, and academic, and to meet each student's needs. And so, the work that we've been doing with our instructional coaches has been honing in around this tier two and tier three instruction, just really diving in with the students who need additional support during the day, and we're talking today about literacy. So, as we know, teachers are amazing, and they have lots of different ways they're assessing whether or not their students are learning. And one of the ways that we've really dug in and dove in and learned about more was our FastBridge assessments, and it's a way that we can benchmark fall, winter, spring, just to see, it's kind of like a dipstick, to see where the students are at with reading and math. And, and then, the two lovely ladies here are going to talk about how they use those systems in order to track and progress manage students and meet their needs.
So, I'm up first. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about FastBridge and how we test and when we test first, and then Amy's going to go into what it looks like in the classroom with that student level. So, FastBridge is a tool that we use at the school, K through five. We do it three times a year, so fall, winter, spring. Some of it's taken on the iPad, but part of it is administered by what we've called the SWAC team this year. So, our SWAC team has been actually an amazing addition because it basically has given us a lot of instructional time back. All of the intervention, reading intervention teachers from every school, all of the elementary schools, come in, they grab our class, and in 20 minutes, they have our entire class assessed, because there's, how many is there? I don't even know how many teachers there is, but it's a lot. They're just pulling them in and out 20 minutes. If we were doing that on our own, it would take us a week or more of lost instructional time, so that's been awesome addition. After the assessments are complete, we analyze the data at our PLC meetings, and we put students in a risk category. So, if you look on the left side, the fall and winter is just our, those are, this is actually data from my classroom, but the pink is, if you look on the bottom, is the higher risk, summer risk, low risk. So, we want, we want most of our class to be in the purple by the end of the year, and less in that dark pink area. So, we want those bars to go down as the year ends, the purples to go up. So, right now, it's looking pretty good, but still have some work to do, obviously, so making progress.
Abby, could I just, one thing? I hear a lot about this at home, and just for the board members, because I actually, I know somebody who's presenting on a different board, in this district, maybe right now, but, so I asked this question, and it sounds odd, we're talking about high risk, medium risk, low risk. That's fast. That's on us. We didn't go, hey, that's a great way to describe kids.
Yeah.
The word risk, you immediately sort of think negatively.
Yeah.
But the idea is get into that violet, that light kind of purple. You want more in low risk, and you want less in the higher risk, so I just didn't want that point to be low.
So, yeah, in my teacher first grade words, it would be, students who need some help and students who need less help. So, that sounds a little, little nicer.
Sorry, I didn't know.
No, no, thank you for saying it. It's hard to know, like, what you know and don't know about each parts of this, so stop me at any point, too, if you're like, I don't know what you're talking about, and I'll do my best to.
I always appreciate definitions. I've been saying that for four years now. Don't assume I know an acronym, please.
Well, SWAT! Yeah, I was going to say.
That's a good start.
School-wide assessment team.
Yeah, school-wide assessment team.
They're not coming in on...
It's our SWAC team. Sorry, I should have said that, too.
No, they're not going to.
Yes, so anyways, but when we look at this, we're basically at our PLCs, looking at our double exclamation marks and saying, okay, we know for sure these kids need to have interventions in our room, those are the kids we're going to focus on, and those reading interventions take place during our reading workshop time. So, that's like our, when the kids are working independently, and we're pulling small groups during that time, so that's kind of what that looks like. And then, after we do the winter data, then we'll look at this fall growth one, that's the one on the right. So, basically, what it's saying is, these, we've broken it down into kind of quadrants. We do this winter benchmark analysis, so we get a sheet that looks like this, kind of. Basically, we want majority of our class to be on this left side of the quadrant, because that means they are making typical or aggressive growth. So, anybody who's on this side is somebody who has not made the typical growth that we want to, but they might be still at grade level, but haven't made that growth that we want them to. So, if you look at, right now, I have like, it's really two students that have fallen into this left side over here, and those two students are actually students who are at grade level in my classroom. So, the benefit of looking at this quadrant and doing it this way is that if, I would not have paid attention to, like, that would have been on my radar, like, these kids are at grade level, they're doing what, they haven't made the growth that I'm wanting to make, so now that's on my radar, and I'm like, okay, why, why aren't those students making the growth that they need to? But my, my lower students that are high risk is just telling me, okay, yep, they are getting what they need, they're growing at an aggressive rate, and we're going to keep doing what we're doing, and they're going to keep closing that gap, so.
Amy's going to go a little bit more specific. Grand, you know?
Oh, yeah, okay, so what was I saying on this side? Oh, this table shows like an individual score, so this is what we are looking at. So, this is individuals that are blacked out, their names would be in that blacked out spot. And we just analyze their growth with the quadrants. And then, again, we'd like to see majority of our class. If you look at that, the one side that says that they were in the pink, but they have moved to the blue, and we can kind of see, like, have they shown sufficient growth? And that's what we're looking at when we're putting them into this, these boxes over here. So, we go through each student.
So, even though this student was still in a risk category, she are being made typical growth, and so what we're doing, we want to keep doing that?
Yeah. And so, this student stayed in the same risk category and did not make the growth that we wanted to see.
Yeah.
So, then, the next slide will tell us what we want to be doing. So, our screening to intervention slide will tell us the appropriate instructional match or the appropriate intervention for that student. And so, then, we can click on that, it will give us all sorts of information on how to do that intervention. One example is the word boxes intervention that I was doing today with these students. But so, they're currently doing a word boxes intervention, and we just like segment out the word like cab, and then they get it out with their magnetic letters, they make it, and then we have to blend it back together, because they need to be able to segment a word and then blend it back together. And that will help them with their reading and their writing, and to be able to do that fluently. And this is like kind of a typical intervention for a first grade classroom, so. What's nice about FastBridge as well is that they have a progress monitoring tool for us, that then we can progress monitor them online, and then it will graph their data for us. So, we used to have to do this all by hand and keep track of all the papers and all the things, and now it's nice that it's just all in one spot. So, then here, if a student makes adequate progress, then we can say, do they need to continue this intervention? Do they need to move on to the next intervention? What are their next steps if they're making the adequate progress? If a student is not making adequate progress, we go to our PLCs, and we ask certain questions like, was it done with fidelity? Is it a good instructional match? Do they need more time, more minutes with it? Is there engagement issues? And then, from there, we can decide, is a different intervention needed? Like, is this not the appropriate match? Those are things that we talk about at our PLCs with our instructional coaches and our teams, and our grade level teams.
So, here's just a couple quotes from teachers around the district. Not going to read them to you, and you can see that, but we met my school a couple in our last early lease, and we talked about what was going well with working with the coaches, looking at the data, finding the appropriate instruction to meet the kids' needs. I could have a real long list, but I didn't, I didn't put their names on when we were doing our whiteboard things, but I think the biggest thing I'm hearing teachers say is that I have support in looking at the data, looking at the assessments, and finding the appropriate, you want to say intervention, you want to say, I like to say instruction, because it's just a different instruction, to meet that kid's needs. So, I think that's a big part of our, our coaches being in there, and I'm also seeing our PLCs of our classroom teachers, they've always been together and talking, but now, when we meet with our coaches and stuff, we're also bringing in the ML teachers, especially the teachers when they're talking about those kids, and talking about, okay, if you're going to do this instructional practice or strategy, I'm going to do this, or we're going to do both of the same and give them the double goes. So, we're seeing early, early hours, seeing some good, good progress for our kids, and I think the teachers appreciate the support, not only of, here's the instructional practice you want to do, I've never done that before. Coach is right there to show up on it.
And we've both had our instructional coaches come into our rooms to help us with different questions and things about students that could just be stumping us to, like, we don't know what is getting in the way of their learning, and how can we help them? And the other great thing about progress monitoring piece is that everyone can see, like, Loretta, who is just in here, she's our reading intervention, she can go in on FastBridge and look and see how a shared student is doing on my intervention and hers, and like, for instance, Amy and I have moved kids in between our classrooms, because we want to keep our groups fluid, and like, certain kids are being pulled for different things, so we've changed students, so I can just jump right into her intervention and do the next data point, and, and our interventions are literally laid out, like, this is what you say, this is what you do, so I can like pick up where she left off easily, too, so that's made our groups really fluid, and so that's been another benefit, too, so.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
On the graphs, or the scores on slide nine, is there a maximum score that they can get? At first, I thought it was a percentage, but when you hit a hundred and two, I didn't think there was a percentage, so, or has, is there a maximum score that the students can achieve, or is it unlimited?
That's a good question.
The scores are a little bit irrelevant to us, it just depends on the norms for the nation. We, we really focus on the growth percentile.
Right, I was just wondering.
But yes, for this grade level, there wouldn't be a max.
There wouldn't be a max.
Yeah, there would be.
Yeah, but like, the, so this would be early reading. Yeah, there's, there's two tests that the first graders are taking, so kindergarten and first grade takes an early reading test, which is what this is, that our SWAC team comes in and do, because it's very individual, like, do you know your sounds, do you know your letters, do you know your phonemes? And they go through all of these things that have to be tested individually. But then, the A reading is like a multiple choice test that the kids second through fifth grade all will take, too, so it's like kind of comparing to different things. So, when they get into like, taking their A reading, that one fluctuates, like, if they're getting questions right, then the questions get harder, if they're getting them wrong, so that one kind of puts them at a percentage, so that one, there's no like max for that.
Yeah.
But this one does have one, because it's like, do you know your CDC words? Well, there's, there, if you can't really like get harder than, it'd be like a consonant, vowel consonant, like a word, cat, dog, like you can't get higher than that to test out, you know? It is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
As far as the instructional match, have you found that to be pretty accurate? Or any, you know, kind of outliers in that data point?
Yeah. For the most part, I find the instructional match to be accurate. There's been like one or two kids where I just say, oh, I'm not sure, so then I'll like just do additional testing and look at other data points.
And then, a follow-up, is that kind of learning coaching, that curriculum, if I can call it that, a part of the FastBridge program, or is that something for which you have tools in your toolbox that you then say, hey, we're going to work on literacy, and here's some of those things?
That's something that we would discuss as a PLC, so with our instructional coach and with our team, and just make sure that everyone agrees, like, this does seem like the best match for our next.
We, we talk often about triangulating the data, so this might just be a dipstick, and then what is, what else is the teacher seeing when they're reading side by side with the student? I just really like how they just kind of hone in on a specific skill.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, that, even, even that is, is just, I think we're seeing in the data that's really helping.
And I know I've been in PLCs where they discuss where maybe a student is considered high risk, has a double exclamation point, and you just say, no, that was early in the year, they've progressed. I would think that's as accurate as you in the classroom.
And what we've done with a student like that, too, is that then we progress monitor them for like two weeks, three weeks, however many weeks as a PLC that we deem appropriate, but we're just like, oh, now they've tested out, they've surpassed the end of the year benchmark, so, yes, they were a double exclamation point or high risk to start, but we can definitely see the progress that they've made, and so, they kind of can test out. So, I have like three kids who are testing out of an intervention, so.
Maybe take it a slightly different direction. We talk a lot about informing instruction or informing intervention, and we've done that, and I think that's awesome. One of the coolest things for me is, how does it feel when you, you, you get data, you do, the SWAC team comes in, and you go, hey, we're going to do this, we're going to do a little bit more of this instruction or this intervention, and then you see the actual results the next time back? How's that feel?
It's pretty cool. Yeah, I, I have a student this year that, it's actually her, I teach first grade, so it's actually her first year of school ever, and all of a sudden, she's just like, I mean, she's just got to, we've gone through, we started with, you know, letters and sounds, and we went into phonemic awareness, and kind of the whole scope and sequence of all of the interventions, and she's like almost at grade level already, and it's like, she's, you know, she's only had months of school, she didn't even know like her letters and sounds yet, so, I mean, to see it just kind of like, whoa, she's graduated out of this intervention, on to the next one, on to the next one, and kind of rolling through, so, yeah, it's been pretty cool.
And ultimately, the purpose is the student learning, and it lets us target and be more focused, and have the right protocol for the right learning challenge, but there's also something really empowering, my experience has been for teachers, and I love how your face is lit up when I ask it.
Well, she knows what I'm talking about, too, so we're a big reader.
Hey, I did this, I did that, I did this, I helped, and they're moving, and now they're here, and you get to see that for every kid, and it's, it can, it's, you know, there's something really rewarding about that, and that's really, I think, what motivates great teachers, is, hey, I know what I, I know what I'm doing is making a difference in a kid's life, and then I would ask the other one, because I think the same thing, because everyone's one, you're perplexed, the other data said this, we tried these three things, doggone it, it isn't working. You heard them talk about PLCs and others, and that's one of the things that in education in my time, really an isolating profession, we're changing that, where we're bringing more, you know, it's that idea, you know, more brains into the room, more problem solving, what am I missing, how am I doing that? And there's also, because we know that the other things have worked so often, doggone it, we're going to figure it out for this particular kid in this particular situation, too. And so, to me, this is a really, this is really good stuff. Thank you for the work that you're doing, and you're doing great things for kids, and I love that story.
And the SWAC team, I'm just going to clarify, is just for kindergarten and first, because this was our first year that we did early, the early reading tests in, in FastBridge. And then, they take A reading second through fifth, but from an intermediate perspective, from those teachers' perspectives, I would also say it's really neat for them to dig into the data, because they have now figured out how they can see whether or not a student has a phonics and phonemic awareness need, whereas sometimes, they would look and they'd be like, oh, this student is behind grade level, let's just do more comprehension, or let's read more, and there's a student, this, there's, might be like two or three students in my class who still need, what do I first pay your name? Yes, like going back to what are those CDC words, and so, the science of reading has told us that if we, we need to go in order, and so, that's been really great to target those specific needs, too.
I think the SWAC team was very, was a great thing, because it was done right at the beginning of the year, so you think about those incoming kindergartners, all those first graders, the teachers could focus on building those relationships, building the community in their classrooms for a few days, why our intervention teachers around the district were, gave some assessment for our teachers to use.
That sounds a, just a great program. Just what you said about how quick it is, it sounds like how valuable it is, and non-invasive, too, it doesn't impact your, your learning, that's the end.
It was very helpful, very helpful.
Does the data stay with the student? So, from first grade to second grade? So, I moved next year to second grade, and I have a new teacher, can they tap into this to see their progress?
That's one, one of the teachers that I had the photo up there, that's what she was excited about when I talked with her about, is that we've always had, trying to figure out the system for that, I think we now have a system for that. What do you, what do they call it, DOS?
Ross.
Ross, Ross, I do a Ross.
Record of students.
We should've made them guess for it.
Yeah.
So if I, if I have a kid that I'm concerned with, and I'm gonna do a, kind of a targeted instruction or intervention, I fill out a Ross. I put in what I'm doing, if there's other people working on that intervention, they put it in there, and they, that's where all the tracking is and stuff. And let's say it goes real well, or it doesn't go well. Kid goes on to the next grade, that teacher's seeing some different things, and oh, I would better do a, a Ross. They put in the kid's name, it's like, hey, there's already a Ross there. They go right in there, and they see all the information, and all of the work that was done with the kid that you were working on.
And are the parents informed of their progress at public conferences?
Yep, yep, yep. This will be data that we will share starting next week.
And the Ross goes to middle school too, so it's very flexible system too.
Thanks so much for this time.
Next on our agenda is item eight, second reading, eight point one, second reading of policies. Chad Johnson is the new chair of the policy committee, but you haven't actually held a policy committee meeting, right?
Right.
So we're still in kind of a, kind of a handoff period, so feel free to chime in, but I'll start. This is the second reading of policies we read at, at a previous meeting. And we have, we have four of a review. I read the notes of the last one, we've got them up on the screen. I guess just to get into the recorded record, I'll read them quickly. So, policy four thirteen, the changes are updates, definitions to match twenty twenty-three legislative changes. Policy four sixteen adds new references and provisions to cannabis testing and related items. Policy six twenty adds reference to Minnesota statute for clarity, add a definition C and D that had been in previous versions of MSBA policy six twenty. And policy nine zero three, visitors to school buildings and district sites. Information provided by School Law Firm of Squires, Walzberger, and Mace. So, are there any questions, or anybody wanna, wanna look at any of these individual ones further tonight? We will have one more reading after tonight before we, we vote to approve the, the changes. So is there any questions or policy numbers anyone would like to discuss? All right, hearing none, that will conclude item eight point one. Next up is another, another information item on our agenda, item nine point one, a district update from Dr. Redmond.
Thank you. We've got a district update up here, we've got the compelling vision on that first slide, it's just nice to see. It's been, I love the Read Month, we've had some special readers in our classrooms. You know, nice picture there of Christie Peterson, Joe Schmidt on the left, who wrote a really cool book. You know, that has a great character in Joe Mauer, and it's written for children. And Christie had reached out to Joe Schmidt, said, hey, why don't, why don't you come share your book with our kids? And Joe said, why not? I don't live that far away. And so he and Jim McClosage visited the schools on Friday. Number of read-a-thons, literacy nights, and some cultural engagement activities, and just a lot of, lot of fun focus on reading. You get some of the kid voices on the bottom there, you know, why do you like reading? Well, your brain gets bigger. And they're right, your brain does grow if you read a lot, yeah. It's interesting to hear different stories and, and the last one. If you can read, you can do anything. Really cool stuff. February, we celebrate all kinds of things. Our school counselors, National Girls and Women in Sports Day, Black History Month, and there's lots of different events coming up. With lots of, lots of different things happening there. We've got the School Resource Officer Appreciation Day, Engineering Week, Public Schools Week, so. And School Board Appreciation, which we kicked off tonight's meeting with. Our Welcome Center doing, doing really, really cool things, and there's some thoughts here of them being in action, if you will. They did an onsite kindergarten enrollment at Pearson Early Learning Center, and that was during the Winter Blue Celebration and is continuing this week. That enrollment over there, there was an eighth grade family night at Chalky High School, we had over two hundred families attend that event. There's an upcoming kindergarten roundup, twenty twenty-four Kinder Camp. Registration is, is happening, gonna run Kinder Camp again, which is really, really cool about. Leadership professional learning, and again, I think, you know, both of these, the systemic structures meetings and the instructional leadership meetings, it's, you know, going out and really getting to know people in different places. You know, the systemic structures was at City Hall in January, Canterbury Park this month. And then we'll be at Hometown Bank next month, and you can see the things that were being discussed and, and good work, kind of in terms of analyzing where we're at. How do we continue to improve our systems and structures and make sure they're, they're well aligned? And then our instructional leadership meetings, we, we bounce from school to school. We were at Pearson Early Learning Center in February, or will be at Pearson Early Learning Center in February, although, we were there.
I know.
That one's over.
It really was.
That's messing with me. I'm like, wait a second. In March, we're gonna go to Swinney, yeah. I feel like we've held meetings lots of places. This is a little, you know, kinda, all right, you got the Bill Menazi, the long presentation, hey, the bond sales went well. Now you get kind of the simple-minded approach of pulling it apart and just sort of, maybe this is sort of the whole-part-hole sort of teaching or something. But the walk away from that message, tender refunding, you know, it's all about taxpayer savings. Nearly eight hundred thousand in taxpayer savings. Our previous two bond refundings, you know, one point three five million in taxpayer savings, five point four four million. Our total taxpayer savings in these types of refundings, seven point five nine million dollars. Again, that's taxpayer savings, the district doesn't get that money. And I just, I really appreciate Bill and his team's vigilance in terms of, yep, we're doing all the things the finance department needs to do, but we're also making sure that we're doing the best we can to serve our community. And if we can find taxpayer savings, we'll always take a look at that. And then as part of that, kind of pulling this out too, this is just kind of the good news that happened when you're doing that. And, you know, we all know where we were at one point financially, so I, I don't think you can shout this financial good news loud enough. And back in February of twenty-one, our, our Moody's underlying bond rating improved from B, A, A one to A three. This, you know, as part of this tender refunding, they're taking a look at your financial practices and, you know, what, what kind of a risk are you? And our underlying rating improved again from A three to A two, which helps us to get better borrowing rates or bond rates. It is another way of saying, hey, good things are happening with the financial management in Chalky Public Schools. And then the unassigned fund balance, again, kind of on this theme, you know, it's the first time in nine years that that finished where it was supposed to. And, and, you know, according to policy seven fourteen, between eight and twelve percent. We finished, yeah, the last fiscal year at eight point four percent in that unassigned fund balance. We're tracking really well this year, I feel very confident, not to put pressure on Bill and his team. But that, we expect to be at that middle point between eight and twelve percent, and we've talked about that as, that ideally would be the long-term sort of, let's try to stay at or close to ten percent, right in the middle of between eight and twelve percent as called for in policy. And so, hopefully, we'll have more good news as we wrap up this fiscal year and the audit is done, you know, in the next fall, so. And then, cool things happening in our community, it was the annual Chalky Chamber of Commerce meeting. And then, you know, there's a nice photo there. Good news in the city of Chalky, you know, they, a lot of publicity on a decrease in crime rate, reported by the police department. They're at the lowest rate that Chalky has seen since these activity reports were first collected in the early nineteen nineties, which is pretty cool. And then we thought, what the heck, might as well throw it on this page, coffee with the superintendent. Will not be the third week, I'll be away at a conference, but we'll be the fourth week, or the fourth Thursday in February, so February twenty-second. And this may not seem like a big deal to you, you took a sign that used to light up, you can hardly get the replacements, would've been ridiculously expensive to bring a new one in. Hey, we're just gonna get this thing fixed up, we're gonna get it, you know, re-coated and have a nice sign. That's done now. And there was a ton of work, I'm looking at Tiffany, she did a ton of legwork, Ed Zemec did a ton of legwork. And I think it looks really, really cool, so thank you to them. But you might go, oh, they're really celebrating, this seems like kind of a small deal. Not if you knew all the stuff that went into that, so.
Being on the facilities committee, we've been talking about, I, two years?
I don't know, it feels like twenty.
It does, and it's just nice to have that done. It looks great.
Yeah, it does. I drove by it Saturday night, and I was like, oh, look, they fixed the sign, it looks great.
Yeah, I think it was that, well, how long will that take us? A few weeks, a couple months, or a couple years? But there was a lot that went into it. We wanted to make sure that it couldn't be repaired, and it kinda had some false hope for a while, I think, in there. That was dashed, and then it was, okay, what are our options? No good ones. And then, you know what, that'll look really cool, and it does look really cool, so, nice, nice work. But it all, all makes sense, we're joking, although it did take a while, but we're mostly joking about it. It all makes sense why it took that time. That's all I got.
And just, just to say one more time, since we brought up the, the funding at previous meetings too, all the, all these savings on the bonds go directly to taxpayers. We've said this multiple times, but might as well just keep saying it, all right? They, they, they don't go, those savings don't go to the district. So that over seven million dollars goes straight to Chalky taxpayers, so. How was what's in that?
Over fifteen years. Not, not one of them, so unfortunately. Not quite fifteen years, eleven years?
I'd have to look again.
Two thousand thirty-five, I think.
I think it's just that, that piece of, we think of the finance department, they do the accounting, they get payroll, they do those. But there are other things in terms of how do we fund our priorities, how do we make sure we're getting the maximum value for the dollar? And we do monitor things, and this takes some time and effort, but it's, you know, it's the right thing to do. And, you know, it, it's what you would hope that, you know, I think most homeowners who are savvy with their finances, they, they love to do that. A lot of people refinance their mortgage and do that. That's part of the service that we should be a god providing our community. Kudos to Bill Menazi and his team.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is item ten, committee reports and other information. We'll start with Mahata.
I was in this for three days. So we attended a media, back-to-back meeting with the Pentagon for the first time. And they showed us the strategy for the defensive development, yeah. They talk about their budget. They talk about Ukraine, Taiwan, China, and we learn a lot from them. The building is huge. It's like, we, I took ten thousand stamps and I didn't fail, you know, so long. And so, and in the afternoon, we went to the Capitol and we met all legislators, you know. We asked a good questions about the next election, how it will be. They said, you know, everything will be okay. Our democracy is very strong, so we will see. And then, the second day, we were in the White House. And we met with the National Security Advisor, Jake Sullivan, he's from Venezuela. He graduated from high school. School I did my internship, when I was former councilman. So we are, we had a lot of experience, and also we went to Foreign Relations Council, which is very important. United States, they joined the Second World War, and that council was established nineteen twenty-one. And before that, the United States, their economy was good. They just do their business, but they were not interacting. This council suggested, you know, United States is strong and they must be influencing the world. And, and then, they, they joined the Second World War. That's why Europe has won the battle. First war, Germany was the superpower, and they were very powerful. But the United States, when they joined Japan, Italy, and Germany, they lost. And also, they, they talk about the concern about Taiwan, Ukraine. Also, they talk about Palestine and Israel, United States positions, two-state solution. So we had a good time, a lot to learn, and I learned, you know, a lot of things. All I thought was weird, but when I went there, it made sense. So it was good, it was good, I hope.
Sounds like a great term.
Chad?
I don't think we have any news since we last met about community engagement. Yeah, so no updates for community engagement since last time.
Nope. Can we have a meeting since the last meeting?
Yeah, Tim Funker and Tim Aljazilara.
Yeah, Tim Aljazilara over in here with Chalky. I'll let Caroline talk about that, since I don't remember anything in the last few weeks. It's been a nightmare the last three weeks, work-wise, so I'll let Caroline talk about that, and I have no other ideas.
I don't know why Joe's forgetting these days.
It's weird, it's just, I know everything that happened, it's just, it's been bad.
Christie?
A few things, just wanna give a little bit of an update from State High School League. I'm on their finance committee, and fall sports seasons financially were above where we were predicting revenue to come in. And so that's all good news. We are, and if you remember last year, the State High School League reimbursed districts or gave a rebate back to all member districts, membership participation fees, and we are well on our way to having that happen again for the next school year. So that's all very positive, not too long ago, the State High School League was struggling financially, and so things are definitely back in order there. Winter sports tournaments are about to pop, and it's gonna be one after another after another. And they are having the Alpine Ski Season, or Championship, and the other one without, you know, we don't have snow. But they've been working with, you know, the different lodges and whatever to make sure that they have tracks for them to participate on. So it's been a little bit of a challenge this year, but I just wanna put a plug in, we've got some Chalky teams that are doing quite well, specifically wrestling. And they're ranked number two in the state right now for teams, so it just so happens that that's one of the sports that I was assigned to for presenting medals. So I really hope that we'll be able to put some hardware and medals around some kids from Chalky's neck ahead of the trophy here at the end of the month, so. I think that's all for State High School League. We have a Southwest Metro Board meeting, we've got one next week again coming up. We have a Southwest Metro Board meeting, we've got one next week again coming up. And then, yeah, just spent some time at, in schools the past week. Eagle Creek, I visited with Mike and some classroom visits. And then did some reading on Jackson, Sweeney, Red Oak and at Eagle Creek coming up next week as well, so. And then just want to put a plug in for MSBA, Day at the Capitol is Monday, March 18th. Same place as last year, I think it's called Capital Ridge Hotel, which we own. So I think registration is open, but I'm sure Tiffany can help you out with registration if you are interested in going. So busy, busy. Next week I head to the Coalition of State School Board Association Conference. So I'll be gone a few days next week for that, but always busy. When you're not working, you're busy.
You're always.
When you retire, you're just, it's bound to be a sport, so it's awesome.
You're, it's like a, a one month retirement, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
It still counts.
It does. So that's probably your free time.
Tim?
In between committee meetings, we've got a district advisory council meeting coming up at the end of this month. And then we'll obviously have finance facilities for our next February board meeting. I wasn't gonna bring it up on a personal note, I was skiing in Vail last week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So Thursday and Friday was like spring skiing, it's 40 degrees. And then we're skiing in the snowstorm on Saturday. But they're having the same challenge, you know, just with lack of snow, so it was great to.
Do they even have snowmakers there in the Rockies?
They do, as a matter of fact.
I'm surprised.
Yeah, so three days of that, you know, managed to get out without, without a scratch. So it's always good to survive that trip, but that's all I've got.
Caroline?
Before I give an update for community engagement, I just wanted to let you guys know that there's Coach Versus Cancer on this, on February 20th. It's a double header for Shakopee and Maxwell. And so if you want to come, that'd be great and support all the proceeds. We'll go to a local family here in Shakopee. So that's really great with the winter sports kind of winding down, spring registration is open. They start in March, track, let out for track. And then, you know, when we met for community engagement, this meeting was kind of more special because we had Tim Zunker from the president and the Shakopee Chamber of Commerce come to our meeting. And then Jesse Lara, the city of, oh my God, city council of Shakopee. And we really just talked about engagement, like, okay, where's, there's an opportunity for them to come and come to some of the events and which ones make sense. So that was pretty cool, just to like listen to them and kind of what they're doing and how they can help support Shakopee. And then we just kind of talked about a lot of like events or highlights that we had, the Chamber Annual Meeting, CATS interns. So really great updates in the community engagement team. And as, as usual, we're still working with the PTOs and, you know, engaging with them as well, getting out there.
Michelle?
So this week, actually Friday, me and a bunch of other student leaders from the school been inspired to the community committee conversations, another kind of topic. They take a bunch of the, what we call like the ethnic club leaders and they go and they go to this event. It's hosted at, at least I think twice a year. As an honest leader, I'm got invited to it this time. And this week's topic we're talking, or this time's topic, we're talking about what is the need to be like American? And like what kind of like falls under the umbrella of being an American? Next week I'm doing the, I'm volunteering for the multicultural reading night at Sweeney. So I'll be bringing in some books in Spanish and I have some other friends that are also coming to volunteer in. I know a bunch of different clubs, like BSU's helping out, ASU's helping out, NSA, LEED. All of our, a bunch of our cultural clubs are coming in to help out and read in native languages. And then that, next Friday as well, I'm volunteering at Eagle Creek for an event they're hosting as well. So I'm pretty booked.
Overall, I don't have that much to, that much to report. A couple of weeks ago, I attended a meeting for the Gujarati Samaj of Minnesota, which is like an ethnic group for specific Gujarati people like me. And a lot of Shakopee students actually is a part of the GSMN and they go to these certain events. So I got to go out there and talk to them about like the school district, what they like, what they like, what they think could be done better and just gather their, gather like your general, general like sense of what was going on. So that was a really insightful show there. And then we had the community engagement meeting a week ago, where, which was already pretty much talked about. But besides that, I don't have anything else.
Yeah, and I had the personal committee.
I forgot to mention that.
I don't know if there was room for you, Christy?
Well, I told you that I had a lot to talk about, I could fill time, so I skipped over some.
So yeah, I had the personal committee and that's all I have to report tonight, Mike?
I had a district update, I'm good.
Tiffany?
The only thing I'll add that hasn't been shared is just school board apparel. You'll be getting an email from me tomorrow with the amount of pickup dates. So I'm happy to say you will all be fully branded if you place an order here shortly.
Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda is item 11, upcoming meetings and important dates. And Tiffany is doing a good job of just packing this page full of, of items now. So this is worth going, going to look at later. There is no shortage of, of things to do in Shakopee to participate in the school districts, so. No school president state February 19th, we've got Black History Month and school recognition. And then I Love to Read Month, and you can see all the items there. Different reading opportunities that sounds like Michelle and Christie's aren't participating in. And then a link to athletics and activities. So it's always great to have school board members, you know, attend the, the games and concerts and, and everything going on. Does anyone have any, anything they'd like to add for any particular activities? I know Caroline, you mentioned these words.
Yep, Coach Versus Cancer, that's huge in Shakopee. What else?
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Peterson, a second by Aldrich. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close?